Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements under provincial order limiting attendance at public gatherings. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. And I emphasize that you please keep only one electronic device on at a time to avoid feedback problems. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto was called to order. My name is Alan Smithies and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Ron Hunt, Paul Kidd, and Nadini Sankar Peralta. City staff are also present, Daniel Antonacci, Jenny Kotas, Adam Wills, and Kelly Reed. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever properties to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions, undertake the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. In order to ensure that a revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it has been substantially revised. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of discussion on the item. The application is taken into committee for a decision. I'll just ask, are there any committee members here this morning who have any conflicts of interest that they would like to declare? None? Okay, thank you. Mr. Antonacci, we have no files to close, do we? Thank you. We will now proceed with the first item on our agenda, which is item number one, 31 Dundurn Road. I have one person registered to speak, that is the applicant, the agent, Mr. Alan Mather. I hope I've spelled said that right. Sir, are you there?
Hello, committee. I'd just like to let you know that the applicant has not signed in yet.
Okay, I will move ahead to the next item then. We'll come back to item number one. Item number two, which is 88 Olive Avenue. I have one person registered to speak, that is Eugia Hugh. Madam, are you there? Is the speaker there? Hello, Ms. Hugh. Appears that we've lost this individual, has disappeared into the cybersphere as well. Let's move ahead to item number three, 72 Park Lane Road. I have one person registered to speak on that item, and that is Darren Hextra or Huxtra. Are you there, sir?
I am here.
Thank you very much, sir. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Darren Huxtra, and the address for this file is 72 Park Lane Circle.
Okay, thank you. I noted, sir, that you have two variances before the committee, dealing with an ancillary structure and one about the driveway width. I also note that there was a report from Transportation Services dated the 22th of May, which they indicated they had no objections to the application. I'm just going to ask, does the committee have any questions or would it like a presentation on this application? No? Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion on the application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll motion to approve this application.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon to second Ms. Sankar's motion. Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? Sir, your application has been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to item number one, 31 Dundurn Road. Is the agent there, Alan Mather?
No, we still do not have him.
Okay. Mr. Mather, are you there? Okay, well, Mr. Mather is not there. How about item number two? Ms. Hugh, are you there? Ms. Hugh? Okay, well, I'll leave those two, we'll have to come back to them. Item number four, we are 55 Anawan Drive. Is the owner there, an agent, Laerza Carcany, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, hello. Madam, I just wanted to ask, have you had the opportunity to... Can we get your full name and address, please? Madam, can we get your full name and address, please?
It's Laerza Carcany, and I am at 55 Anawan Drive, Toronto, Ontario, employee 109.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask, have you had the opportunity to read the city planning report of the 9th of June? And the Transportation Services report of the 20th of May?
Okay, so my architect will speak on that behalf.
Hang on, just a minute. Slow down when you speak, please. Have you had the opportunity to read those reports?
My architect will speak on that behalf.
Okay, you've seen them.
Yes.
Okay, the report from City Planning is recommending refusing the variance number one related to the driveway width, and the Transportation Services is also recommending refusing the variance relating to the driveway width. So what I suggest you do, madam, is that give us a... There are two other people registered to speak on this item, so if you could give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal and why we should not consider the staff recommendations to refuse the driveway width variance. Okay, madam, you can start now.
Okay.
My architect is here, and he wants to speak on this.
So my architect is on the line. Maureen, can you provide commentary, please?
Pardon me, madam?
They have to unmute Maureen.
Can you unmute?
There has to be one person speaking, okay? One person making the presentation. So can you please start over?
Can you mute me and unmute Maureen, my architect?
Okay, well, someone has... So who is speaking? Is the architect speaking?
Yes.
Okay, let's... Can I get his name and address, please?
Okay, it's Maureen Rabzoni.
Are you the architect?
Mr. Chairman, the architect has not registered to speak. He is not on the line, so the applicant, the owner's gonna have to speak.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
You heard that, madam? You're going to have to speak because your architect did not register to speak on your behalf.
Sure.
Okay, so you'll have to make the arguments.
Absolutely, okay. So our neighborhood is a lovely neighborhood, and throughout the different houses, we see on our streets that people have done different things with their driveway. So for the merits of this hearing, I do ask for your understanding of the council that, you know, other properties have done different widths and have done different things with the driveway, so I don't see why my property would necessarily not enjoy the same treatment as the neighbors.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they have different... And I have support letters, letters of support at least from, I think it's five of them that I supplied, which is, you know, my vicinity, to sort of say they have absolutely no issue about, you know, us doing this thing.
Okay, I'm going to ask, madam, what's your rationale for having such a wide driveway? It's certainly much wider than needed to get access to the garage, so what's your justification for needing such a wide driveway?
It's actually, it's being used as a sidewalk, even though it technically counts as a driveway. With 8.56 meters, it's only near the existing, you know, near the existing wall link. So the size gets smaller towards the front of the property line, and the landscaping there is is minor from what is being permitted.
Okay, but, madam, how many vehicles do you have to park on this property?
Three vehicles.
Three. So two in the garage, one in the driveway?
One in the garage, two in the driveway.
Pardon me?
One in the garage and two in the driveway.
Okay, so is, I guess, your rationale for having a much wider driveway so that somebody's backing out of the garage doesn't have to move the car that's in front? Is that it?
Yeah, and, you know, for the, you know, if we need to get out, like, you know, the snow remover or, and, you know, if, you know, my parents, you know, they're old, and if I ever need to build like a handicap rail at some point, you know, it gives us the flexibility of allowing you to do it down the road.
Okay, all right, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker?
I have my parents leaving with me.
Madam, thank you. You've already made your presentation, thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the speaker if there was any... I've seen the letters of support, and that's great, and I don't see any transportation concerns, but did you provide any proof that this is the prevailing character of that neighborhood? And if you haven't, can you just talk to us a little bit about what you've noticed on your own street? How many properties have the same enlarged driveway? And if not, I'd like to hear about that.
Sure, so there is a number of... There is a building that's a two-story right across three, or I'd say three houses down from us, and they have a double driveway. My neighbor right in front of me, he can park four cars in front of his property. If you move down the street closer to Sweeney, there is, there's properties, you know, who have enlarged their driveways, they can park up to six cars in general. So, I mean, whatever I think we're proposing, it will not denigrate the whole feeling and the look of the street or the neighborhood, for that matter in fact, more than anything. I'm planning, you know, to have it, you know, beautified and to have landscaping done, so, you know, it would increase the curb area in general, and will make it a desirable street to live in.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sankar, did you get your question answered?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We have two other individuals registered to speak on this item. I have a Jennifer Evola. Are you there, madam?
Committee members, I'd just like to let you know that Jennifer has not signed in yet.
Thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Jennifer has not signed in.
Okay, all right, I'll go back. I have a George Dranet Saris. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, sir, could I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is George Dranet Saris. I live at 114 Ferrier. My mother is the neighbor at 57 Inoue Drive, and I'm actually here on her behalf, but I've previously, before buying my own place, I lived many years on the property, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood.
Sir?
Yes.
Can you slow down when you speak? Okay?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, so, sir, I'm representing my mother, Helen Dranet Saris. My position is that the variances asked by Mr. and Mrs. Carcany are not minor. I am in agreement with the report of the city transportation officer and the city planning officer. Currently, as I'm sure the committee knows, the zoning allows three-meter width, which is good for one car. Mr. and Mrs. Carcany are asking for almost three times this amount, so this is not in keeping with the neighborhood. This is, in a sense, they're turning their front yard into a parking lot. There are some concerns because we all need green space for several reasons. So our position is that it is not a minor variance request, it is a major variance request. Ms. Carcany brought up the issue of supporting neighbors. I noticed one document that was signed by my mother. My mother's 87 years old, she does not read English, and she speaks marginal English, so I'm not sure how they got her to sign this, but in my opinion, it appears they were not fully transparent when they got her to sign, because when I gave her the facts of what the request was, she was against it. So I think that conduct is quite unethical, and it appears to me that all of these structures, all three variances, have already been done. So it appears to me that Mr. and Mrs. Carcany think that the rules don't apply to them, they just go ahead and they build things, and then they hope to fix the problem after. I think the rules should apply to everybody equally. Permission should be obtained before structures are built and variances are undertaken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to our previous deputant. Is there a Jennifer Evola there? Ms. Reed, I'm just gonna take her off the list. Thank you. Okay, we have no one else registered to speak on this item. Would the... Can I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, the speaker needs to rebuttal what was stated by...
Hang on, just a moment, hang on.
By the...
I'm sorry, Ms. Sankar, my mistake, I spoke too soon. Ms. Carcany, I'm sorry, you have the opportunity to rebut the concerns that were raised by the previous speaker.
Yes, may I just start saying that I'm completely disheartened by what my, you know, the previous person just spoke about? This is completely not true, what he said about his mother. We had, we have a good relationship with her, she is capable, she's been in the country for over 60 years, she knows English, she speaks English, we talked to her several times, we actually, you know, helped her with a lot of her things that she needs to get around the property. We're very kind people, and for him to sort of make this accusation about...
We speak the same language, though.
And, you know, just, it's completely, you know, not honest, and, you know, portraying a completely false picture. I mean, I don't even understand, you know, why this is happening. I have a letter, his mother signed, we explained the whole situation to her, so it's kind of, you know, I'm very frustrated, I'm very angry with his accusations, and this is not true. I mean, I could show you pictures of my neighbor, and I have him over the phone, and could see, you know, how other people are doing their driveways and all of that. I mean, I have elderly parents, and I take care of them, you know, and all I'm doing this is, you know, for ease of access, not just for ourselves, but for our parents, as I'm sure you would appreciate, you'll probably do the same thing for his mother. And, you know, the extension of the driveway or the sidewalk is not even on the side where his mother lives, it's on the other side. So I don't understand why he would have a problem, and why would he, you know, portray a picture like this about who I am and what we're doing to the property. You know, this is, you know, this is within our, you know, our own rights to go over this committee and to talk about this issue, and for him to portray a completely false picture of what this is being turned about, I'm completely, completely, you know, angry and not happy with it.
Okay, thank you, madam. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Oh, Mr. Kidd?
I note from the staff report that you were before the committee previously and had an approval for a double driveway, 6.59 meters wide, back in 2018. I just, I'm not exactly clear why a double driveway is not sufficient. Can you explain why you need a triple driveway?
It's not, thank you, but it's not a triple driveway, this is just being added as a sidewalk.
Eight and a half, eight and a half meters would... Is fairly substantial. Anyway, that's, that's good, thank you.
Any further questions to the speaker?
Sorry, it's smaller at the front of the property, it just widens as we go in and move towards our backyard, so just for ease of access.
In the front, it's only three meters anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, whether the applicant has spoken to the transportation since the approval of the six-plus meter width?
The only...
And now increasing it to eight.
Okay, just, Mr. Hunt, just be aware, though, we did have a memo from Transportation Services that is with this file that indicated their opposition to the driveway request that was dated the 20th of... Just a moment. Yeah, May 20th. So there, I, okay, I will ask the applicant. Madam, Ms. Carcany, did you have any discussions with Transportation Services about your expanding the width of your driveway?
No, we haven't, we only spoken to the planning.
So you had no discussions with them?
No.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers your question, Mr. Hunt. So could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Yes, I would, through you, Mr. Chairman, I would move that this application be deferred, sign a "aye" until that discussion takes place with Transportation.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion for Mr. Hunt requesting that the application be deferred so that the applicant can discuss their driveway concern, the driveway issue with Transportation Services. Would someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application has been deferred until the next available meeting, and this is so that you can discuss your driveway proposals with both, I would suggest, both with Transportation Services and City Planning. So make sure that you contact those two divisions and discuss your driveway, your driveway application with them, okay? And we'll see you back after you've finished those discussions. Okay, we will now move to the next item, which is, actually, I'll go back. Item number one, 31 Dundurn Road. Is Mr. Mather there?
Committee members, we still have not reached the agent.
Okay. Item number two, is Ms. Hugh there, 88 Olive Avenue?
Hello?
I'm not there either.
Hello?
Ms. Hugh, are you there?
Oh, yes, sorry, I got some problems with my mic.
Okay, are...
Hello?
Are you up and running?
Um, yeah, could you hear my voice?
Okay, thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My full name is Eugia Hugh, and the address is 88 Olive Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam. I just wanted to add, have you had the opportunity to read the city planning report of the 22nd of May?
Uh...
Of the 22nd?
Yes.
And are you aware that they have no objections to your application?
I read that they have some problem with this...
Have you seen, have you seen that report, madam, from City Planning, dated June 19th? No, I'm sorry. Have you seen it?
The planning from June 7th.
May 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, the report is...
May 22nd.
The report is just an information report, they had no issues with the application.
I just wanted to be aware if she's seen it. Okay, thank you. Okay, madam, I'll just, I note that there's no one here that is, no one else who is registered to speak on this item. The variances you're asking for are very straightforward. I'll just ask the committee if it requires a presentation or if it has any questions. No? Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt, Mr. Kidd?
My view, the requested variances are of minor nature and appropriate for the neighborhood. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application.
Yeah, subject to urban forestry.
Subject to urban forestry.
Okay, thank you. Summon to second Mr. Kidd's motion. Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mather, I take it, is still not there?
No committee members, he is not.
Thank you. Item number five, 88 Glentworth Road. I have one person registered to speak, that is the agent, Mr. Mark O'Vera. Mr. Vera, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, committee members?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vera. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the, in the four variances they have before us. I note that there are no recommended staff conditions and no comments from staff on this application. I'll just ask the committee if it has any questions or it would like a presentation. Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think it does meet the four tests. I'll motion to approve this application.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Could I get someone to, Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Vera, your application's been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number... Item number, I will just, Ms. Reed, I'm going to move item number one to the bottom of the morning agenda, okay? Item number, item number six, 47 Viamed Crescent. I have one person registered, one person registered to speak, that is the agent, Alila Karamzada. I hope I got that right. Madam, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, madam. Could I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Leda, I'm working and my address is 88 Olive Avenue.
Okay, I notice we have, in this file, we have no staff comments from City Planning or any other division other than Urban Forestry, which I know it's, there are two variances here. Pretty clear what you're asking for. I'll just ask the committee if it has any questions or it would like a presentation. No, okay. If I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would move approval as this meets the four tests required for approval.
Thank you, and it's subject to urban forestry conditions?
Correct.
I don't believe we had any staff, did we have a staff report on four? Oh, my mistake.
Mr. Chair, I-
Just a moment. Okay, Mr. Kidd, could you just spell out what that recommend, I didn't have it in my file here, but please go ahead.
A recommendation from the city staff report. The proposal is to be developed in accordance with the sidewall height dimensions illustrated on the west and east side elevation drawings attached to the report.
And what's the date of that report?
June 19th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, I'm sorry, there is a requirement from the building to the approved plans as per City Planning's recommendation and urban forestry conditions. So, are you prepared to support the application subject to those conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Summon to second, Mr. Hunt's motion. Mr. Kidd seconds, all those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to City Planning and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on item number seven. One Roland Road. I have one person registered to speak here. And that is Mr. Tom Sprague. Mr. Sprague, are you there, you're the agent?
Yes, I am, I'm the agent.
Thank you, sir. Could I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, sir, it's Tom Sprague. Name of the firm is Sprague &amp; Company Architects Limited. And the address is 156 Duncan Mill Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. I noticed that we have no staff comments or conditions on this application. There's two variances you're requesting, very straightforward what you're asking for. I'll just ask the committee if it-
Yes, I just, actually, I sent a letter through on June 30th, kind of explaining the background on it.
Pardon me, sir, pardon me, sir?
I sent through on June 30th, it was posted, just a bit of background about this particular application.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions or comments or would like a presentation? Okay, thank you. If there, I note that there's no one else registered to speak on this item. If I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would recommend approval of this as if the variances are minor, the general intent of the zoning and official plan are maintained and it would be compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Can I get, summon to second, Mr. Hunt's motion, and Mr. Kidd's seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
Item number eight, 6 Gordon Road. Call up the file here a moment. Well, I notice we have one, one person registered to speak here, the agent, and Mr. Thomas Goral. I hope I spelled, I've got that right. Sir, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, I'm present.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you for waiting. We have a, one variance before us relating to lot coverage and I notice that there are no recommended conditions other than from Urban Forestry. So, I'm just going to ask the committee if it would like a presentation or if it has any questions or comments. None? Okay, thank you very much. Can I get, again, there is no one registered to speak on this item. If I could get a motion on the application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Mr. Chair, I feel the requested variance are minor in nature and appropriate for the neighborhood. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application.
Subject to urban forestry.
Subject to urban forestry.
Thank you. Summon to second, Mr. Kidd's motion. Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Sir, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, have a good day.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, 72 Vanderhoof Avenue. I have one person registered to speak here. And that is Babak Nagash. I hope I've said that correctly. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. I just wanted to ask, have you had the opportunity to read the City Planning report of the 22nd of June?
Actually, there is some confusion on this file. The email, even the invite went to some other applicant-
Sir, can you speak up a bit?
There are, there is some communication is missed on this application because the invite and all correspondent went to some other applicant, not to me. So, we didn't see no documentation.
Okay, sir, I wanted to- So, you haven't read the City Planning report of the 22nd of June?
It wasn't sent to me, it was sent to-
It wouldn't be sent to you, sir, it would be in the file.
Yeah, they had the email wrong, they had another, another agent on the file.
Okay, well, I'm going to tell you, sir, what this, what this report recommends.
No, I like, I like to-
Sir, let me finish. The staff is recommending that there's modifications be made to the application, which apparently you've agreed to, which is eliminating variance number three regarding the east side yard setback, eliminating variance number four regarding the west side yard setback, reducing variance number five regarding the floor space index from 0.6953 to 0.61 times the area of the lot and reducing variance number six regarding lot coverage from 41% to 37.3% and eliminating variance number seven regarding the building height. Now, are you prepared to make those, make those modifications?
Yes, I do, I do, but-
Okay, well, can you, can you go through your application and confirm what modifications you're making to your application?
So, basically, we are going to reduce the height of the main pedestrian entrance and the platform to 1.5 meter as we spoke with-
Okay, hang on just a moment. So, you're proposing to change variance number one? Okay? From 2.11 meters to what?
To 1.5 meter according to-
1.5 meters, okay.
According to our conversation. And variance number two would be, would be the same, would be dropped.
Hang on, variance number two stays the same?
No, it would be dropped to one, instead of two, instead of one point-
Goes from 1.9, it's going to, the proposed front porch is 1.96 meters above established grade and you're proposing it to be 1.72 meters above established grade?
It would be 1.4.
1.4 meters, okay. What's the next one?
The next one would be the side yard setback. We are keeping it at .46 meter because of the, this size of the, the house would be shrunk drastically and would be a 22 feet wide house if I keep it as-
What's the next change?
It would be, number four would be the other side of setback. So, we like to keep it at .46.
Okay, I, variance four stays the same, variance number five, the floor space index?
Yeah, we are reducing the floor index according to recommendation.
So, what are you changing it to?
We were changing it to .61 percent, .61.
0.61.
Yes.
Number six, the lot coverage, you're proposing to change that as well?
Yes, we are reducing it to 37.3 percent according to recommendation.
37.3 percent, okay. And variance number seven, the height?
We are going to comply with the permitted height, yes.
So, you're deleting that one?
Yes.
Okay, you're deleting number seven. So, let me just go through the changes you're proposing. Variance number one, the proposed pedestrian height is 2.11 meters, that's changing to 1.5 meters.
Right.
Variance number two, the proposed front porch is 1.96 meters, you're changing that to 1.4. Variance number three stays the same. Variance number four stays the same. Variance number five will read, currently reads the proposed floor space index is 0.6953, you're changing it to 0.61.
No, the variance of the four, no, I'm sorry, can I add something? Number four, we are changing to .61.
Is 0.61.
Yes, from .69. So, we are going to go with the recommendation of the planning department.
Okay, hang on, just a moment, sir, which one are you referring to? Variance number five?
Number four, four. Number four stays, is .69, we are reducing to .61.
No, sir. You have to go by what, you have to go by the numbering that's on the notice. Variance number five relates to floor space index.
Oh, sorry, sorry, my bad.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, variance number six, the proposed lot coverage is 41%. You're, you're reducing that to 37.3%.
Yes.
And variance number seven, you're deleting.
But I have spoken with the examiner and it says, you can talk to in the committee adjustment if you can get a little bit more than a bylaw, like maybe like nine meter. This can I request it right now to nine meter, instead of 8.5 meter, bump it to nine meter?
No, hang on.
First number seven.
You're proposing to delete the variance, the height variance, number seven. Correct, you're going to comply with the bylaw.
Yeah, I will comply with the bylaw.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. If I can, I'll just ask, does the committee have, does the committee have any questions or would it like a presentation, Ms. Sankar?
I do have a question for the applicant because everything to me just happened so rapidly on this call. First, you said you didn't receive the notice, it went via somebody else's email. It feels you're negotiating stuff on the spot. I feel from your presentation or from you going through this, you're just sort of flying by the seat of your pants and I want to hear from you if you feel you didn't have ample time to understand what the staff report indicated and would you, would you need more time in that a deferral of this application would benefit you to have a more discussion with staff? Please just answer me that.
The deferral would be an option, it won't be an option for my client because we had this, for some reason, I had no idea, in the beginning of the meeting, I couldn't get the invite and I called the city at 9:30 and the invite has gone to some other agent. So, that was the confusion was, which is why I didn't get it. So, and I saw the neighbor's report, the lease side report just now, on the website, it's posted right now. And I have spoken to planner and we got to comply, we got to comply with the, with the recommendation of the planner and we're going to change the drawing accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hunt, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a question. I'm, I'm a bit confused about the changes that the applicant has described this morning. They are not consistent with the staff report understanding of the changes which were agreed to by the applicant. Which leads me to believe that some of the agreed to changes have now been changed again.
We are-
I'm wondering if the applicant would be better off or best off to go back and ensure with staff that they are in support of these most recent changes. I guess the one that I, or two I'm most confused about is they said in the staff report that they would eliminate variance three and four, which were the side yard setbacks, excuse me, and the applicant is now saying that aim at the reduced setbacks.
Okay, sir, you've, I guess you've heard pretty clearly from-
Yes, yes, I, is, yeah, sure, we can defer the applicant, this application in the, defer it and I can revise the drawing according to recommendation and I can consult with the planner for the side yard, side yard variance number three and four and come back to committee adjustment.
Okay, so you've, you've heard comments from the committee pretty clearly that there is some concern expressed by the committee members that you don't fully understand or comprehend what's being asked of you by the, in the City Planning report. Are you confident that you're, that you're, you're fully aware of what you're being asked to do by the planning department?
Yes, I do, I do, I'm willing to defer the application.
Okay, well, you understand that that's, that's your risk. We've, we've told you that, you know, there are some concerns expressed by the committee about whether you fully comprehend what's in the staff report. That being said, the onus is now on you. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think what I've heard today doesn't let me sit comfortably that the applicant really does understand what's happening and we're getting mixed messages. For this reason, I think I would, you know, prefer to see them work it out with planning and I'll motion to defer this application, sign a die.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon to second that. Mr. Hunt? Seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been deferred until the next available meeting so that you can discuss your application fully with City Planning. And please, you know, I emphasize that you, you know, take your consultant there and have a long discussion and make sure that you fully comprehend what's being asked of you by the planning department, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Item number 10. Which is 341 Whitmore Avenue. I notice we have the, an agent registered to speak as well as a number of area residents. The agent, Mr. Enzo Locasano, I hope I've said that correctly. Sir, are you there?
Correct.
Hello, sir? Are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
It's Enzo Locasano, 130 Bridgeland Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. I wanted to ask, have you seen the 22nd of May City Planning report?
Yes.
So, you're aware- So you're aware of the recommended conditions that permeable materials are to be used for the proposed driveway, the floor space index of the dwelling excluding the basement floor shall not exceed point eight times the area of the lot, and that the applicant is to provide permanent opaque screening or fencing along the east edge of the proposed rear deck and front porch with a minimum height of one point five meters from the floor.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask, sir, if you could give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Sure. The we're proposing a new two-story dwelling, what exists there now is a one-story bungalow. The variances that we're looking at is for the for number one, which is the front yard landscaping. This one was pretty obvious why we couldn't keep it due to the driveway and the front entry stairs, but we're also dealing with a right-of-way which we share with three-four-three, which takes up quite a bit of space. We've tried to maximize the front yard landscaping by introducing planters within the stair, which we've already discussed this with planning, and they've agreed. The maximum length, yes, we are a little bit longer than the permitted at seventeen meters, we're at eighteen point zero-three, which we felt is very minor in order to meet the require the requirements of the client. The floor space index at the permitted at point eight, we are at one point one-two, and that's because the the majority of the or part of the basement floor was not to be included, so that we with planning, we understood that the upper floors cannot exceed the point eight, which we've been able to meet. In order with regards to the platform, the slight variance of point four-six square meters was done in order to put a barbecue up there for the winter months. With regards to the east side setback, yes, we are requesting a slight variance of point six-one, but the existing house currently is actually point three-one, so we're actually improving the east side setback, and actually we're improving the west side as well, where the existing is one point one-three and we're going to be one point two to meet the bylaw. The the platform follows the same rule, we're staying flush with the house on the east side, which triggers the other variance, the height, the extra foot was required because of the we had to lift the garage ceiling in order to put a door operator for an eight-foot garage door, which he requires because he's got a large SUV. And the maximum head of the wall is this because of the height, we had to increase that slightly as well. Now with things, it's very much in keeping with some of the projects that are on the street, that three-one-three, three-one-four, three-two-one, three-seven-six, and three-nine-seven Whitmore. We were maintaining the the front yard setback to stay in line with the existing houses pretty much along the street. We're not any longer than any of the addresses that I previously stated. We're well within the floor space index that the other people have requested along the street. And with front yard landscaping, I think we've done a pretty good job in trying to meet whatever we can. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, any questions of the speaker? Ms. Senkar?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I see that we did receive some complaints from or concerns from Robert and Michael Arnon, who are owners of three-three-nine, which is, yeah, next to you. There are really some of the concerns we're not we're not able to address, but one of them is really about the length, the building length itself, and you did mention lot, but you just said because the owners needed it. So I'd like to understand why do you need the additional length?
Well, because the front entry stair, the foyer, comes in at a lower level because of the of the amount of stairs required to get to that first floor, the entry stair takes up already quite a bit of space and pushes, and because the stair is what we call single motor to one side, it physically pushes the entire building that much further back. We've tried to may or put the stairs on top of each other in order to make them more efficient, but I find that with these long skinny houses, the stairs have a large impact on making the building that that much longer in order to fit your basic living room, kitchen, dining, and family room. As you can see on the plans, the spaces aren't overly large. I know the the sort of basic rule is lot, small house, which which I think we did a fairly good job in still maintaining the character of the street.
Thank you. Ms. Senkar, any further questions? Okay, thank you. I notice we have three other people registered to speak on this item. First one is a Julia Michaud, are you there?
Committee members, I'd just like to let you know that Julia Michaud has not signed in yet.
Not signed in yet, okay, thank you, we'll go to the next registered speaker, Robert Arnon, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Mr. Arnon, can I get your full name and address, please?
Robert Arnon, in three thirty-nine Whitmore Avenue, where the house to the east.
Okay, thank you, if you could give us your views on this project?
Okay, so my brother and I are the owners of the house. We have a couple of issues with some of the listed variance that the applicant is currently looking at. The two biggest issues we really have are, I believe, for variance five and six in regards to the minimum setback to the east, and then as well the platform without main wall such as the deck, porch, balcony, similar structure attached to the wall. Again, the second-story platform setback is zero point six-one meters, so like the applicant said, the the existing setback now between the two houses is very, very narrow. And and our concern is that even even going at zero point six-one, the proposed east side yard setback, we're concerned that there's going to be issues when doing any foundation work, that it it might impact the foundation of our house.
Okay, thank you, sir, do you have any other concerns?
Yeah, so the 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 second is in regards to variances two and three, as well as, I believe, seven and eight, and and really that's in regards to the the overall size of the building. So if you look at the site plan that was provided, you can see that the existing current structure now, the bungalow, to the south, it finishes a lot further, it finishes further north than our current bungalow does, but with the additions that that are being proposed, you can see that a large proportion of the house is now coming into our backyard, like it's blocking our sunlight into the backyard, and and the rear wood deck is coming as far back as where our existing wood garage is now.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, thank you, sir. Is Julia, Julia Michaud there?
No committee members.
I have a last, Ms. Michaud's not there, Ms. Reed, so I'm just going to take, should I keep her on or take her off? I'll I'll move her down to the bottom of the list, speakers list. Okay, next speaker is Lino Neves. Lino, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, sir, you have, can you give us your your full name and address and your views on the what you see as, your views on the project?
Sure, my name is Lino Neves, and I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Manuel and Mercedes Neves, who live at three forty-three Whitmore Avenue. And their concerns are with respect to variance number one, they're concerned with the stairs, that the stairs are too big and it's going to block them coming out of the driveway and seeing and seeing pedestrians. And then they're also concerned with variance number two, which is the size of the building. They find that the building is going to be fairly large, and it's also going to block their their view and sunlight and their enjoyment of their backyard. They also had a concern, but I'm not sure if this is something that the committee can deal with, but I'm going to just throw it out there. At the rear of the of the property, there is a shared garage. So the garages at the back are, they they share a party wall. So they're concerned, once the garage on three forty-one comes down, how are they going to fix and make sure that, sorry?
Sir, I'll just emphasize, if it's, if you're referring to a garage in the rear yard that's that's being taken out and it shares a common party wall, that's that's an issue between you and the neighbor, it doesn't involve the city. So and then the city doesn't get involved in those issues, but that's something you need to discuss with the applicant.
All right, okay, I will take that advisement and deal with and speak with the applicant.
Okay, all right. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neves, I'm go, I'll go back to Julio, Julia Michaud, are you there?
We cannot reach Julia at the moment.
Okay, I'm going to take her off the list, okay, thank you very much. So those are our speakers. I'll ask now, if we can take the matter into committee, can I get a motion on this application, please?
Mr. Chair, let's remind you that the applicant has an opportunity to rebut.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Wills. Enzo, are you there?
Yes, I am.
My apologies, you have the opportunity to address the concerns raised by the previous speakers.
Thank you. With regards to the gentleman at three-three-nine, I believe it was Robert, with regards to the the length of the building, we are, yes, we are three feet longer. I'm not sure if that's going to make less of an impact if we had shortened the building, but with all due respect, he also has an addition that does go further back on his building than what the original building went. With regards to the the deck, it's not large enough to have a party or to have overlook. The intent is really access from the deck down to the backyard and to have a barbecue there just in the winter so they have better access. We did agree with planning department to place a screen for privacy for for both my my client and also for the neighbors. With regards to three forty-three, the stair is not a variance. The number of stairs, that is what's required to get to that main level. There's not much we can do about that. The garages at the front force us to have that many stairs. It's either the stairs outside or the stair inside. With regards to blocking the driveway, there's, I'm amazed that you can actually get a car back there only having two meter, two meter wide right of way. But yes, I I understand, but there's quite a bit of boulevard once you pass the stair. There's almost the same distance of approximately four meters before you can get to the sidewalk. So there's plenty of space and time before, as you're backing out to safely enter Whitmore Avenue. I don't think our stair has any more impact than their front porch or that has a roof on it or the porch on three-three-nine, which has the same roof. So I tend to differ with having an obstruction there.
Thank you, sir, I just wanted to ask, I note that you're you're taking down the garage that's that's in the rear yard of the property?
That is correct.
And I I would assume that you will make sure that you do not damage the the garage on on your neighbor's property, the the abutting Westerly property?
No, the party, the party wall will be reviewed by the engineer. Once we take out the the structure, we've already been consulting with our engineer that the wall will have to be temporarily reinforced as we take the walls down, and then we will have a discussion with our neighbors through my client on on finishing that wall and making it waterproof or watertight.
Okay, so is is it is it your intention that you can make that commitment that you're not going to cause any damage to your neighbor's garage?
No, no, we we have a commitment from our owner, and we have a structural engineer on site that we will repair that wall as as needed and as consulted by our engineer if we need additional reinforcement. And obviously, we're we we will have to make it watertight.
And you'll do that at your expense?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? Ms. Senkar?
I did not hear the speaker address the point of the east side neighbor and their setback. Can you explain or address their concerns?
Well, with, again, with the east side setback, the existing is only point three-one. We're actually going to point six in order to, and because we have the right-of-way on the other side, that actually restricts us even more. So if you look at several projects on the street, that good example, three-two-one and three-one-three, their setbacks are actually point, point three-one that they had gone for. We're at a disadvantage because of the right-of-way, which automatically pushes our building over, so we weren't able to center the house on the lot. With regards to, I don't believe there's any, there's a a late afternoon shadowing effect on the property, but really not on the house itself, as both properties are, the backyards are facing south, and most of the sunlight is not interrupted during the day except for the evening.
Thank you, sir, I just wanted to ask, with respect, the exist, the the existing setback on the east side of the of the existing building is is just over one foot, and and you're increasing.
Point three-one, that is correct.
And you're increasing it from point three-two to point six-one?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Senkar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, I've heard from all of the parties, and in terms of the explanations provided, I I feel it's acceptable, and I feel that they've modified in ways that they try to consider all, you know, experiences, and it does seem to fit the character of that specific neighborhood as well. So I'll motion to approve this application, I'll subject it to the July ninth, sorry, the May twenty-second staff report in that the following conditions will be attached, and that's permeable materials are to be used for the proposed driveway. I'm also, that's the only condition, along with the permanent opaque screening or fencing along the east edge of the proposed rear deck and front porch with a minimum height of one point five meters, and this will be subject to forestry. So those two points, staff report. So those two points, staff report and forestry.
Ms. Sankar, there was also one recommendation from city, in the city planning report, that the floor space index of the dwelling excluding the basement floor shall be no greater than 0.8 times the area of the lot. Was that to be included in your recommended conditions?
Sorry, okay, yes.
Thank you, okay. Can I, someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Hunt, Mr. Kidd seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been approved, subject to city planning and urban forestry conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on item number 11, 177 Besborough. And I have one person registered to speak, that is the agent, a Mr. Reiner Hoyer. Sir, are you there?
I am present.
Yes, thank you, sir. Just wanted to know, we have no one registered to speak on this item. You have one variance related to, yes, the proposed eaves on the north side yard. There's no staff comments on this application, so I'm just going to ask the committee, does it have any questions or comments or would it like a presentation? Okay, thank you. Again, there's no one here registered to speak on this item. If I could get a motion on the application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Yes, through you, Mr. Speaker. I would recommend approval of this. I believe the variances are minor in nature. They, they maintain the intent of the zoning and OP and are considered appropriate for the development of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Could I get someone to second Mr. Hunt's motion? Mr. Kidd seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hoyer, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last item of this, pardon me, second last item of this session, item number 12, 394 Kwatt Avenue. I have Mr. Diaz, the agent who is registered to speak. There's no other deputants registered to speak on this item. Mr. Diaz, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes, sir. You, I just wanted to ask, you have one variance before us, it's relating to the addition to the rear of the property. You have three variances requested. We have no, I noticed that Toronto Region Conservation Authority has no objection to your proposal and there's no comments from city planning or transportation services. So I'm just going to ask the committee if, if it has any questions or comments or would it like a presentation? No? Okay, thank you. Again, there is no one registered to speak on this item. If I could get a motion on this application, please?
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Hunt had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, would like to ask the applicant if they have reviewed the conditions that have been presented by urban forestry.
Um, yes, we have read it and it appears that there, the forestry has no comments on the application.
There are, there are conditions that you will have to satisfy though, with respect to getting a permit and tree protection and all that other good stuff.
Oh, yes.
We're aware of that.
We are aware of that, yes. And those are in place already.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on the application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Mr. Chair, I feel the variances are requested are of minor nature and appropriate. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application, subject to forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second Mr. Kidd's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll go back to item number one. Ms. Reed, is Mr. Mather there?
Committee members, unfortunately, we have tried to contact the agent and we have not received any response and they are not in, they have not signed in.
Thank you. I'll just ask Mr. Antonacci, should we defer this application?
Mr. Chairman, on the notice, we notify the people, if you don't show up, we have the right to proceed without them.
Okay.
If the members wish, they can proceed without the agent.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to item number one. Again, we have, the agent is not here. We have no one registered to speak on the item. Just a moment, I'm just going back to, there are no staff, no, no staff conditions or comments on it. It's a one variance relating to the, just a moment here, relating to the floor space index. So I'll just ask if, again, there are no recommended staff conditions or comments. If I could get a motion on this application, please? And I emphasize, there is no one who is scheduled to speak on this item. Ms. Sankar?
Sorry, I was trying to allow my colleague. Sometimes we have to be mindful. So seeing that there's no one else to speak to this and ordinarily, I, you know, I would have asked the question, why, why do you need, you know, this much? But I, I, I do believe that if staff had no report on this whatsoever, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Can I get someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are, we are adjourned until 1:30. Thank you very much.
Could I ask just one question? Can we, can we stay logged in so we don't have to go through the...
Yes.
Okay, yeah.